Would Mrs. Bass, would you please take the roll?
Yes. Um, okay, so we're gonna call the special meeting to order and District One Barbara McQuinn.
Here.
District Two Chuck Shaw.
Here.
District Three Karen Brill.
Here.
District Four Erica Whitfield.
Here.
District Five Frank Barbieri.
Still here, all by myself.
District Six Marcia Andrews.
Here.
District Seven Deborah Robinson.
Here.
And Mrs. Brill is here, she is, um, she just stepped away from her camera for a moment.
Superintendent and the General Counsel and Inspector Generals are also present. Board members, we have three sets of minutes on the agenda for approval. Um, March 11th, March 18th, March 18th for those two meetings on that day. Motion was made by Mr. Shaw to accept those. Second, Dr. Robinson, anybody opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Next item, um, wrong mouse. We have three, four items have been added to the agenda for good cause. Um, I'll go ahead and read the good cause statement so I can make the General Counsel happy that I didn't mess that up. BRD one proclamation twenty dash zero three, statement by Michael Castorley, Executive Director, Council of Great City Schools on the Killing of George Floyd. Good cause exists for adding this item to the agenda now with the killings of George Floyd, Ahmaud Arbery, and Breonna Taylor. It's timely for the board to demonstrate its collective position in condemning these killings and so many others that are steeped in racism by aligning itself with the statement recently published by the Council of Great City Schools. Second item added to the agenda is BRD two Inspector General search. Good cause exists to add this item as one of the three shortlisted candidates. Actually, two of the shortlisted candidates have withdrawn their names from consideration. In order to stay within the approved timeline, a decision is needed whether the board wishes to add other candidates or go forward with the one remaining candidate. BRD three mutual separation agreement and mutual release. Over my strong objections, good cause exists for adding this item at this time due to decreasing state revenue caused by the economic impact of the COVID-19 pandemic and the anticipated cuts to state K-12 education appropriations. Departments are currently determining budget reductions for SY 2021. This separation agreement was very recently considered. Not with a lot of arguing, the need to act now is for the Office of the General Counsel to determine its current and future budget cuts and for its planning purposes. Approval of this item now would be consistent with those goals. The last item added for good cause is POL HR one policy three point eight two, interim employee protocols due to COVID-19 emergency rule adoption. Good cause exists for adding this item to the agenda now as employees continue to enter district facilities. Board action is needed at this time for employee protocols for safety reasons during this pandemic and to be in accordance with CDC guidelines and governmental orders. These measures would be temporary with the intent that a full plan would be brought to the board for adoption as a policy for SY 2021 within 90 days. Mr. Superintendent, are you withdrawing any items?
Mr. Chairman, um, I am not withdrawing any items at this time.
All right, and board members, uh, one item has been pulled since the agenda was released and that's TL one. Is there anybody else who wants to pull any items? Seeing now we need a motion to approve the agenda as modified. Motion by Mrs. Whitfield, seconded by Miss McQuinn. Anybody opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Are there any disclosures or obsessions, board members? I see nobody raising their hand. Mr. Superintendent, do you have comments you'd like to make at this time?
No, sir, for sake of time, I'll reserve my comments.
Board members, any comments? Okay. We have, uh, two recorded speakers. I guess, uh, Mr. Ramisar is gonna put those on for us now. We have, uh, Brother Carl Mohammed and Vice Mayor Lawrence Gordon. So if you're doing that, Mr. Ramisar, would you go ahead and run those for us now, please?
Peace and blessing, Superintendent and School Board Meeting. Uh, my name is Brother Carl Mohammed, and I just came today to loan my voice to the idea of BRD one, the proclamation from Great City Schools as it relates to the George Floyd's death. I wanted to say to you that, um, I understand the need for us to have compassion for physical death, but I want to draw your attention to the mental death that has been taking place inside of the educational process of our children here in the state of Florida since it's been incorporated, well, since it's been started. And I wanted to, uh, say to you that, uh, we here in Palm Beach County, we have always led supposedly in the idea of trying to bring equity to the state of Florida. But one of the things that we've had a major problem with is to bring resources to the, um, community. You know, I've been working with you now for about 27 years and I've been on the writing team for the Achievement Matters for all, um, the person in charge of African and African-Americans for, um, for the Coalition for Black Student Achievement and a whole host of different things, the Superintendent Task Force, and a many other things that are happening inside of our county. But the one thing I've been able to observe is that we've never put in the resources behind it. It's pretty much like the Florida Statute one zero zero three point four two eight, which was a mandate that was passed by the state of Florida, but no resources was behind it. And when you do those kind of things, it's like designing a vehicle, but you don't put any fuel in it in order for it to be operable. I'm praying sincerely that as we continue to look at what is needed as it relates to education and as it relates to relieving the burden of ignorance that's on the planet, that we will consider the fact that there needs to be some resources in the community. I understand what you do as a school district and it's vitally important for everybody in the, um, state of Florida, but what the community does for itself is even much more greater because we understand that the parents and community have a greater responsibility in the education experience of their children. So I'm gonna leave you with the idea that we could get some kind of assistance inside of the community. Um, we should be able to assist you in trying to really accomplish what it is that you desire, so. And I also like to remind you that many of those that you have already educated, they are not in a position to, um, assist us adequately because they don't have the quantitative knowledge that has been presented to us since we've been working on this task, um, to really understand what is going on. So if at any juncture we should have the opportunity to fellowship with one another, um, I'm always open and I'm really looking forward to the future of education in the state of Florida, which is gonna be led by Palm Beach County and its school superintendent and school board members and the community. Talk to you later next, uh, next general meeting, um, Brother Carl. Thank you for your time and may peace be unto you.
This is Lawrence Gordon, Vice Mayor of Town of Haverhill, and also President of the Palm Beach County Caucus of Black Electoral Officials. And I would like to make a comment on two issues. The first one being, um, the way contracts are handled in terms of the school board, uh, giving more contracts to minority-owned businesses. I think the school board has quite a bit of work to do to improve in that area. And I think the school board also needs to streamline the certification process so, um, greater numbers of minority-owned businesses can meet the criteria and therefore qualify for these millions and millions of dollars of school board contracts. And I think the school board needs to be prepared to, uh, resist the, uh, the, uh, attack that's gonna probably come from, uh, the majority-owned businesses who are currently getting, uh, most of the business that is issued. I think that's a very serious area that needs to be addressed. And secondly, uh, I'd like to talk a little bit about, um, uh, the current racial situation. Asking that the school board looking to eliminate, uh, to eliminate racial disparities and student unrest, suspensions and explosions. Also that minority students should have more access to the First Officer Program. That, um, the school board would be wise to institute a high school course on the systematic, uh, nature of racism, uh, a course and program such as the Racial Equity Institute. And the, uh, BEO, the, uh, Black Electoral Officials would be more than happy to work with the school board to change the schoolhouse, the jailhouse di- dynamics that are currently, uh, happening with our young black boys and girls. And lastly, I'd like to give the school board, uh, kudos on speaking out about the murder of, uh, Mr. George Floyd. Uh, we have a serious, uh, racial disparity, uh, problem in this country. And the more people such as the BEO and the school board who speak out about it and work towards changing things, the better off that we will be. Again, Lawrence Gordon, President of the Palm Beach County Caucus of Black Electoral Officials, and Vice Mayor of Town of Haverhill.
Thank you, Mr. Ramisar, for helping us with that. So board members, the, uh, unless you want to pull anything off the consent agenda, there's CS one Summerside Academy and FMPA one Amendment to Power School Group. Um, assuming neither one, no one wants to pull those off, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda with those two items. Motion by Mr. Shaw, seconded by Mrs. Whitfield. All in favor? Any opposed? Dr. Robinson, you opposed? Or is that you just putting your hand up late? Okay, got you. All right, motion carries seven zero. Takes us to the next item on the agenda, which is BRD two, the Inspector General search. As all of you know, at this point, um, we had one, one of our shortlisted candidates move out on Saturday and the second one on Monday. And so we are now down to one shortlisted candidate left. Um, Mrs. Bass?
You skipped BRD one, can we go back to that?
I'm sorry. My, uh, my apologies. Um, I understand on BRD one, uh, the proclamation that, um, Mrs. Whitfield is gonna read that for us. Mrs. Whitfield?
Yes, thank you so much. Proclamation of the School Board of Palm Beach County, Florida, proclamation number twenty dash zero three, June 10th, 2020. The School Board of Palm Beach County acknowledges its recognition and adoption of the attached statement by Mr. Michael Castorley, Executive Director of Council of Great City Schools on the Killing of George Floyd and to adopt this proclamation. Whereas, the School Board has reviewed the attached statement by Michael Castorley, Executive Director, Council of Great City Schools on the Killing of George Floyd and whereas the School Board agrees with these statements and whereas the School Board wants to express its position condemning this killing and the need to address racism. Now, therefore, the School Board of Palm Beach County, Florida declares and proclaims that, section one, the School Board acknowledges its recognition and adoption of the attached statement by Michael Castorley, Executive Director of the Council of Great City Schools on the Killing of George Floyd. Section two, the School Board condemns this killing and the racism behind it. Section three, this proclamation shall take effect immediately on this 10th day of June, 2020, and was approved by the School Board at the meeting on that date, done this 10th day of June, 2020 in West Palm Beach, Florida. And I just wanna say it is an honor to be able to read that, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Whitfield. So the next item on the agenda is BRD two for the Inspector General search. As I started to say, we only have one candidate left. Um, getting food back from somebody's microphone. Uh, Dr. Lucava, can you turn your microphone off for a minute till we get the feedback? Thank you. So, uh, board members, the legal division has given us, um, five options, but those are only considerations. We certainly can do whatever the board wants to do with this, but, um, my understanding from talking to Dr. Lucava is if we, if we do pick other individuals to be added to the one that's there or whatever the board does tonight, there's still apparently enough time to do the background investigation so that we can stay on schedule to choose a new Inspector General by, uh, next Wednesday. So, um, at this point, we just need to open it for discussion and decide how the board wants to, uh, to go forward on this. Mr. Shaw?
A question, when we, when, um, when we did the vote last week, were there any of the other candidates that had enough votes that we could consider from, um, from two or three of them to make a change? I didn't, uh, I don't remember exactly what the counts were.
Uh, Mr. Shaw? Dr. Lucava? Barbieri? I'm sorry, go ahead, Dr. Novak.
In our tally sheet, we have a clear, uh, fourth person that could be our number two, and that's Neba Rezzy. But then we have two other candidates, Hewitt and Bliss, that would require a runoff. So we can pick that third person.
If they want to expand.
If you want to expand.
Mrs. Brill?
Thank you, so I'll make my comment, which I know isn't gonna fly with all of you, but we wouldn't be at this point if we had considered the hybrid with the county. So I'll just put that out there, but my preference would be that if we're going to shortlist, which I think is really the best option, is to pick two more candidates, that we just start anew with the candidates that are left and put in our two top choices. I don't really want to go with the tallies we've had. I, you know, I went back in, I read their backgrounds again, um, so I would prefer to do it that way.
Um, Mrs. Whitfield? I'm sorry, Mrs. Whitfield and Mr. Van Wurk?
Thank you, I'm sorry, couldn't get my microphone up. Um, I completely agree with Mrs. Brill. I would like to, um, see if we can do a quick tally again, if you guys can send out another survey of the remaining, um, candidates that were, um, that are still in it and that, um, you know, passed the screening tool, um, I think that would be great. I would like to get a couple of people to interview if it is still time for us to do that. Um, I think that would be wonderful. And also, she's thinking right along the same lines as me. Um, if we're unable to do it, maybe there, there is something where we need to reach out to the county. Um, you know, I'm definitely getting nervous in this process as well. So I'm hopeful that we can find, um, some people to interview, um, from those very qualified candidates that we, that we already have.
All right, Mrs. Andrews?
Thank you, and I've already started calling some of my references. And as I look at this, you know, we are still in a pandemic and maybe some of the people that we truly wanted to apply, some of the top, top talent would not leave because of the state of emergency that the country is in right now. And now that I think about it, Ms. Brill, when you said the county, I'm looking at that now because, you know, maybe we can do a pilot, uh, for a year with, with the county, uh, with the IG at the county. And in our policies, it said that we had, um, uh, if someone is not there, we could put somebody in that spot while we're working through maybe, uh, some type of contract with the county and, uh, for a year, a pilot. And so then after that, hopefully we will be in a better place, uh, for health reasons and, and this pandemic hopefully will be kind of subsided, that we really can get some candidates. I've been looking at all of these candidates and as you look at the across-the-board scoring, that I really do believe that I don't want to rush something just to get an IG. I really know that we have a great team up there, uh, in the IG office, lots of great leaders already there. And I do know that maybe some oversight, maybe a pilot oversight with the county, while we take the time and stop for a minute and, uh, and come back to the table when the climate is better for people who may want to actually apply. And some people won't leave where they are now based on the conditions of the country.
So let me respond, I'd like to make a comment before, Mrs. Brill. So, I mean, we have qualified candidates. We went through a search and we've gone through the Audit Committee process and we have nine candidates altogether that made it through and, and, uh, to throw out the whole process and try and negotiate something with the county and putting an interim place or picking somebody in the Inspector General's office to do it for a year while we, while we negotiate a contract with the county, I mean, what did we go through all this exercise for? I mean, all of them, I've been, uh, all of them have been willing to do virtual meetings with us, so there's no question that we can handle this. We've been doing school board business virtually, so there's really no reason why we can't pick two more people off the list, vote for two more people off the qualified list that the, the, the HR department did an excellent job of finding us these candidates and embedding them for us. And just, let's move on with the process rather than stopping the whole thing. And, I mean, it's not even fair to the people that have applied. They put their names out there, taking a risk that their employers are gonna know that they applied for a position here. It's gone public and not to tell them, too bad, we decided we're not gonna do it. I don't think it's fair to the candidates, you know, in the process that, uh, the Audit Committee put in place with all the work they did to help us with this. So I wouldn't support that, certainly I'm just one vote, but I wouldn't support that. Ms. Brill, you wanted to say something, and then, then, Miss McQuinn?
Yes, and so the word of the night has been hybrid. So I really think that I agree with what Mrs. Whitfield said, um, that we, we, again, you know, shortlist, like we said, add two more candidates if for some reason they pull out and we wind up without someone, because we do have qualified candidates. Just as a reminder, the county hybrid model, um, that they were talking about, as I recall, would keep the staff that we have in the district and provide an IG, you know, that they would give oversight. So I do think that would work, but I do understand what you're saying, Mr. Barbieri. These people have put themselves out. Um, I don't like rushing the process, um, but this is where we're at. I'm not gonna keep rubbing it in. So I, I think that, um, I would still opt for us to try to shortlist, but if that falls flat, when it comes time to do the interviews, then I would ask that we not only pilot with the county, but, you know, just give it a chance and see because we might find that we are very happy with it.
I'm actually, I'm, we're having discussion before a motion. I'd like to make a motion, please. And I'm gonna let you all know who have it in front of you, it's option two. I move to continue the IG selection process by adding additional candidates to the shortlist based on the June 3rd board meeting votes.
There's a second? Seconded by Mr. Brill? Dr. Lucava?
And that would be option three, I believe, uh, Mrs. McQuinn.
No, no, she's suggesting Dr. Lucava two, which we used the votes from the last meeting. Option three, a round of voting.
Okay.
Okay, sorry, sorry, my apologies.
Mr. Barbieri?
Go ahead, Mrs. Whitfield.
Now that I understand that, that is not what I wanted to vote for. I would prefer that we start over and that would be option three. So I'm gonna rescind my vote on that one, thank you.
Okay, so the maker of that motion wanted to modify the motion? Who made that motion, Ms. Brill? So, uh...
I made the motion and so could we do an additional call for a second? It was option two.
Okay, do we have a second for Mr. McQuinn's, um, motion for option two?
You're kidding me?
For what?
Can we, but even for discussion?
Dr. Robinson, are you making a motion, you seconding that? No, go ahead, turn your microphone on then, you're gonna speak.
Thank you, um, yeah, I, I'm glad I'm getting the opportunity to speak before, um, any motions are, are being voted on. But, so... Okay, so this whole thing has been pretty painful, right? Um, many of us participated or listened in on the Audit Committee's evaluation or review of the candidates. And I could just tell you from my own review of the applications and the Audit Committee's comments, like, there's no shining star that, that responded. Every, there's, like, okay, so I get there's not, there's not perfection in the world, right? But, but Mrs. Andrews just said something that explained it to me as a, as a possibility because I was thinking maybe we advertised in the wrong places? But yeah, I think you're right, in this, in this time of the pandemic, like, who wants to move and who wants to uproot their family and, you know, all that? Stability is really, really precious right now. So maybe that's the reason why. I mean, what, um, what I want to do is, and I can't pull up my thing now, so I don't know. This, as I recall, it's not, it's a blend of, of the options available. But what I would like to do, I think, is to appoint an acting or an interim, I'm not clear on the language, um, IG, um, and, and do that for some period of time. I too am willing now to look again at the county IG. I still am not walking there, you know, happily, right? But at some point, I would like for us to put it out again. So my suggestion is that we look at an interim and then maybe, um, for six months and then do another search, which was not an expensive endeavor, but do another search and another national search and at the same time reconsider, put the county IG back on the table. Um, I don't think we should keep going through this cycle. So I'm willing to put the county IG on the table in case, um, the reason that we didn't find the ideal person, wherever ideal exists, um, is not due to the pandemic. So I'm, I'm blending options here, I think.
So before, there was a whole bunch of hands went up, I called it in first, Dr. Robinson. Is anybody willing to second Mrs. McQuinn's motion? All right, the motion fails for lack of a second. We need a motion to vote on and discuss, so somebody want to make a replacement motion? Mrs. Whitfield?
I would like to make a motion for option three, that we continue the current IG search and identify new candidates with a new round of voting.
We have a second by Ms. Brill? Any discussion? All right, let me see, show hands on this one, all in favor? And I vote in favor also, there's four in favor, so the motion passes with four votes. Ms. Brill, Mrs. Whitfield, Mr. Shaw and myself. Opposed were, unless somebody's recusing themselves, would be Ms. McQuinn, um, Mrs. Andrews and, who am I missing? Dr. Robinson. All right, so that motion passes. So, uh, at this point, Dr. Lucava, you need to provide us with the...
Yes, we are, and just to remind the School Board, we are going to do the same exact process. I'm gonna add the link to the chat, but give me about two to three minutes so we can kind of add all the names together and I'll get right back to you. Can we do that, sir?
Yeah, that's fine, and I was told by the board clerk, I thought I did, but I guess I didn't take a motion and a vote on, um, the, uh, the statement that was read into the record by Mrs., with the proclamation by Mrs. Whitfield. So go ahead and do what you gotta do. So we need a motion on, on that proclamation. Apparently, I, I didn't have a motion on it. Mrs. Andrews, seconded by Ms. Brill. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Without a vote, I guess, to, to change the order. If the board has no, it's no issue while, uh, Dr. Lucava's doing that, we can move on to, uh, BRD three? Anybody have an objection to taking that out of order while we're still on BRD two?
Can I just ask a quick question? Um, when he sends us that, that survey, um, are we voting for two candidates of all the ones? That's what we're gonna do, right?
Yeah, that's... You're gonna be voting for two and I'm gonna be sending you that link in 15 seconds.
Okay, no worries, I just wanted to make sure, thank you.
If it's only 15 seconds, then we'll hold off on going to BRD three because that's gonna take some discussion also.
Okay, if you guys don't mind, go to the top right-hand corner where the chat features at, next to the time. Click on that and there should be a link. It should take you to a form and please make sure that you select your name and then two, your top two candidates. Does everybody see it at this time? Thumbs up if you do. Thank you very much. Is the link working for everybody? Okay, we're just waiting on two more board members.
Do you mind reading for me? It'll go fast.
All right, so. Mr. Barbieri, we're just tabulating. We just need another minute or two. Mrs. McQuinn, your votes have not gone through. I think there's some Wi-Fi issue, but...
She can give it to us verbally.
If you would like to give it, give it to us, if you would like to give it to us verbally, or if you want to send us a, a message on the chat.
Oh, for her, you just got it?
We just got your...
It says, yeah, I've responded. Thank you.
Which ones? Just to confirm with you.
Can you say?
Yeah.
It's Cashman and Navarrezzy. Those were your votes, Mrs. McQuinn?
Give me the last name.
Cashman.
And Navarrezzy.
And Navarrezzy. Were those your two votes?
Yes.
Very good.
Those are my two votes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mitchell is going to read out the votes, just like we did the last time, and go through the process just like the last time. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you, Dr. Locava. Ms. Brill, that's Hewitt, Navarrezny. Ms. Andrews, Hewitt, Navarrezny. Mr. Barbieri, Bliss, Navarrezny. Mr. Shaw, Hewitt, Navarrezny. Dr. Robinson, Holmgren, Navarrezny. Ms. Whitfield, Harper and Holmgren. Ms. McQuinn, Cashman and Navarrezny. The tabulations of those show our next two candidates to add to the already selected one candidate remaining is Mr. Navarrezny and Hewitt. So they'll be, they'll be added to the one person we have already.
All right. Mrs. Andrews, go ahead.
I think that's a lady, the lady.
Yeah, it's, it's a miss, it's a miss instead of a mister, anyway. Who else? And if I saw another hand?
I apologize. Much, much.
Thank you, Mrs. Andrews.
Thank you very much.
All right, so the next steps, we will be contacting the two individuals, letting them know that they've moved on to the next round. We will also start the background checks on them, and then I will provide feedback and information to the board as soon as they get ahold of them, and just to inform you that they've actually accepted to move on to the next round.
All right.
Any questions?
Any questions from the board? All right, so we're through with that item for tonight?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Locava, Mr. Mitchell. So we're back to BRD three. I recommend the board approve the attached mutual separation agreement and mutual release between the Palm Beach County School Board and Ms. Juliann Rico, Esquire General Counsel to the board, and authorize the superintendent and the board chair to sign this agreement. Motion by Mr. Shaw, seconded by Mrs. Whitfield. Discussion, Mr. Shaw?
Thank you. If we approve this, I didn't see anything on the agenda about us appointing an interim or acting attorney. So what, what action are you recommending on that?
Well, I spoke to Mrs. Rico about this, and she's already talked to the two deputy general counsel in her office, and one of them has indicated that she would like to do it, and she would agree to do it for a two-year period without any additional funding. She'd be willing to stay at her current salary. Mr. Burke has attached the savings that that would bring to the district to $406,000 over the two years, and that person is, is, Mrs. Rico, why don't you explain what you did on that?
Thank you. The commentary on the description, and perhaps if the board wanted to make a motion, they certainly could, that it's proposed in an effort to ensure the budget savings, the current general counsel's salary and benefits be frozen through FY22, and the deputy general counsel, Shontoya Bernard, Esquire, be appointed as acting general counsel for this period, and the acting general counsel will fulfill all the duties of the general counsel based on a contract to be considered by the school board next week at the June 17 virtual board meeting. So...
So I'll make that recommendation. Do we have a motion made by Mrs. Brill, seconded by Mrs. Whitfield? Discussion, Mrs. Whitfield?
Well, I wanted to just talk about the, the general move, not the, the motion for Ms. Bernard, but I, I do agree that she would be a wonderful acting general counsel, so I'm, I'm very glad to have her. And do you want me to read out my comments?
Yes, ma'am. Let's finish this motion, and then we can make all the comments we want. Anybody else want to comment on this motion? All right, Dr. Robinson, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry. I really had to figure out how to make this thing work better. But, so I'm going to support that motion, but, and I realize that we're walking into this in, in a budgetary crisis, as we have discussed earlier. But I don't really think it's a good look to define at this point that her pay must remain the same for a year, right? When we don't know if we're going to be in the green, yellow, orange, red, or whichever color scenario, right? So my request is that we reevaluate the pay and the status in six months. So I'm, I'm, I want to offer that as an amendment to the current motion.
Ms. Brill? This discussion, the first thing I saw go up is Ms. McQuinn, and then Ms. Brill. So Ms. McQuinn?
My comment before Dr. Robinson spoke was that I, I, I thought I understood, so let's just address what I think we should do, was that we, that we not preclude increasing an acting general counsel salary. It was my understanding that we saved the money by not filling the, that attorney spot, that that's how we were saving money, that we were agreeing that for this, this coming year and the next two years, we were not filling that attorney spot.
That's, that's correct. The savings Mr. Burke has calculated, $406,000, take what he took into consideration is not paying a general counsel's salary for the next two years. That, that's what he looked at. Ms. Brill was next, then Dr. Robinson.
Thank you. And so I completely agree with Dr. Robinson. That was my only hesitation with the motion. You know, we are expecting Ms. Bernard to take on more responsibilities. I think she's excellent. I fully support her. I think that she will do an awesome job, although I have to say she's going to have some tough shoes to fill. But I know that, that I, I do think it's unfair to lock her in. And we're not saying that it's going to be the same salary, Mrs. McQuinn, but I do think we need, in all fairness, to Ms. Bernard, to revisit this. So thank you.
That's what I was saying. I don't want to lock her in.
Dr. Robinson?
So can I get a second on my amendment to the motion?
I, you know, when I saw hands, I thought somebody was going to second it. I'm sorry. So do we have a second on Dr. Robinson's motion? I have lots of hands, so I'll just assume it's Ms. Brill. It's seconding your motion. All right, so any discussion on that motion? Board clerk, are you clearing what the, what the, what the motion is? Miss Barr?
Yes, yes, I am.
Okay. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. So that was an amendment to the motion. Do I take it? I'm not sure if I have to vote on the primary motion. I guess I do, because the first motion was Ms. Brill, so I guess we need to vote on that one.
Yes, go, go back and vote on the main motion as amended.
Okay, main motion as amended. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. I don't know, is that, is that, is that it for Mrs. Rico? I mean, we're done with you, Mrs. Rico? That's it?
You'll never be done, you'll never be done with me.
And I agree with the other speakers. Shontoya Bernard is an excellent attorney, top-notch attorney. She's got big shoes to fill, but I know she can fill them, because she's a great attorney. So I'm looking forward to, I'm sure all of us are looking forward to working with her. When Mrs. Rico gets in her lifeboat and leaves, somebody asked me yesterday, with three of our top administrators applying for superintendent positions, the inspector general's leaving, now the general constable's leaving, they want to know if they're playing music on the Titanic while it sinks. So it's, so Mrs. Rico's grabbing a lifeboat on her way out, I guess. Mrs. Rico?
I'm going to ask the board if I can reserve my personal comments for September 16, which I think will be my last board meeting. But what I would like to say at this time is, oh, boy, this was, this was supposed to happen then, to thank the board for supporting this budget plan for the Office of General Counsel, which not only these cuts create significant dollar savings, but preserve the functionality of the office, keeps the outstanding and essential legal team intact at a time when this change also allows me to respond to the needs of my family. So I thank you, board, as always, for your leadership and your support. Thank you.
Rico, I told you, you can't cry. You can't do that to us, okay? I guess you can save that for the September meeting. We'll be ready with the Kleenexes. Mrs. Whitfield?
Thank you. The, the comments I just really wanted to make, I, I really think Ms. Rico's doing a big favor to her department by doing this, and I'm devastated personally to lose her. She's a person I really respect and, and love having as a part of our administration. But I want, I want this board to make sure that, that since she's doing this, that as we are going down the road of, of cuts, that we remember this huge sacrifice to try to keep her legal team intact, because one of the concerns that I have is that we cut so much, and then we, and then our legal team is no longer able to protect us. And so, you know, I, I think this is a very generous thing that she's doing to make sure that they stay together and they stay strong. And I think we have to just try to remember that as we go forward, because I don't want to see this district hurt later on by that. So, Ms. Rico, we're going to miss you so much. Thank you.
I just want to tell you all that, Mrs. Rico, and I've been discussing this for, like, two weeks, and I, I kept saying, no, 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 there's got to be some other way, there's got to be some other way. You can't leave. But she finally convinced me that there was no other way. So I agree. I mean, it's very genocidal for her to, you know, when you ask a department to cut, cut their costs, and, and the head of the department says, the best way to cut the costs is for me to leave, it's like, I don't know if anybody's ever done that before. So thank you, Mrs. Rico, for helping us show the rest of the district that the board is willing to take a big hit, because it is a big hit for you to leave us, especially with all the things that are coming up. But again, Mrs. Bernard will certainly be able to, to help us get through all of that. The next, the next item on the agenda is POL HR1, Policy 3.82. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, sir. Before I go into that, you know, Julianne and I have a special relationship, so I won't say much today, because we'll still be in the trenches every day for the next three months. But real relationships are predicated by ups and downs. And I'll just say Julianne and I have a real relationship, and I'll leave it right there. I recommend the board adopt the proposed emergency policy 3.82 entitled Interim Employee Protocols Due to COVID-19. This action is necessary due to the imminent danger to the public health, safety, and welfare posed by the transmission of COVID-19, and in order to facilitate the continuous operations of the district. The board is taking only the action necessary to protect employee health and public interests. This imminent danger requires emergency action, and the procedure for the adoption of this emergency policy is fair under the circumstances and the reasons stated below.
We have motion, motion by Ms. Brill, seconded by Mr. Shaw. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? All in favor, seven zero. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is TL1. Mr. Superintendent?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board approve the Out-of-School Service Programs Agreement rider for 14 community-based organizations to provide summer camp, and authorize the superintendent to sign all related documents.
Motion made by Mrs. Andrews, seconded by Mrs. Whitfield. I know Dr. Robinson pulled this. Discussion, Dr. Robinson?
Thank you. I cannot find the health protections in this document. Where are our expectations around spacing and face coverings and so forth?
If I can have Mr. Oswald or Dr. Sheffield respond, please?
Yes, Mrs. Howell, Kawana Howell, she is on. She worked with legal in regarding to drafting the rider for us for Phase One. Ms. Howell?
Yes, good afternoon, board and superintendent. Ms., Dr. Robinson, in speaking with the providers on Tuesday, the CBOs, the community-based organizations that decided to move forward with operating summer camps on our sites, have all included that language in their COVID-19 plan. It's not a part of the rider. They have shared that documentation with me, and I can share that with you.
Okay, well, I suppose that's how we operate, but I'm not going to support it, because I expected to see expectations here. I'm glad that you checked their COVID-19 manuals or whatever to make sure that the appropriate safeguards are there. But I would have liked for our agreement with them to be clearly stating what our expectations were.
Mrs. Rico, do you want to, would you want to advise the board on?
Yes, Ms. Kim Hall, I believe, is on the line, who helped draft actual contact, contract language that references these protocols. So, Ms. Hall, could you address Dr. Robinson's questions and actually just indicate to the board the, the covenants and so forth, the obligations that the, that the, that the entities will have to undertake?
Sure. The CBO is responsible for monitoring and complying with all CDC, OSHA, and all federal, state, and local recommendations and requirements related to COVID-19. The school board isn't responsible for monitoring or enforcing that compliance, but they are responsible for complying, complying with those.
So, Ms. Hall, may I, just for clarification, so embedded in the contract rider, it, it's a covenant, covenant and, and obligation, correct? Is that how?
Yeah, they represent a warrant that they will comply with those laws.
Okay, so that's an enforceable aspect of their contract, correct?
Yeah, it is.
So let me ask you a question and follow up to Dr. Robinson. So if they've got to follow the CDC guidelines, but we were told earlier that we might be able to follow CDC guidelines when we reopen our schools, how are we going to possibly force them to do something that's not possible?
The possible, the issues with us implementing CDC guidelines has a lot to do with, you know, what our authority is as a public entity, what our employee authority is, what our public-facing authority is, et cetera. These are, these are covenants that go to a third party. They're operating the... These are these are covenants that go to a third party. They're operating the camps, and they're operating those independently. So, you know, they they have agreed in this agreement to undertake those obligations. And, you know, as as any other third party would do with their obligations, we're not we're not undertaking the obligations. They are. And as I understand it, in the real world, the ability for private entities to essentially by contract, create protocols is probably a lot easier than it is for a public entity to work through those by public policy, et cetera.
Dr. Robinson, did you have follow up to that?
Yes, so I appreciate all the legal talk and the CDC and the OSHA regulations and guidance. But therein lies part of the problem, because in case we haven't figured this out yet. Okay, I'm trying to find nice words. So CDC is not living up to the expectations of the public health and epidemiology community. How about that for nice words, right? And so, in my opinion, which I think is fairly well informed, just looking at CDC guidelines is not enough to protect. And I'm crystal clear on this. I'm just I'm just telling you, I've I expressed it in a prior meeting. It's it's just not enough. And the other thing is, because of the political landscape, CDC and OSHA might, well, not OSHA probably, but CDC could issue guidance in a week that tells you, you don't have to do anything, right? Like, God only knows what they might issue. And so it is it's just not acceptable to me for us to just point to these entities that I think almost any public health and epidemiologist would tell you is not enough. And so I'm I'm not supporting it. I hope you don't bring me back anything else ever again that just has this kind of, I get we got cover, right? I'm just not going for it. I think I've made that clear. Like, I I'm gonna just tape record myself, and I'll play it next time you bring me mess like this.
Is there any other discussion?
Ms. Barry, I think it's also in talking with, you know, Ms. Howell, we've gone back and forth, you know, regarding with the rider and and working with Ms. Hall, and definitely appreciate the assistance of Ms. Hall. And we did a meeting with the with the providers, with the agencies earlier during the week, and the principals at the schools in which currently have the community-based programs. And initially, when we talked about opening the Phase One for the community-based agencies, I think we had about 14 of the community-based agencies. And out of the 14 at currently, because they're scheduled to open, I think it's on Monday, the 15th, and I think currently we only have about six of the community-based agencies that say that they will indeed open. And I know that we have some of our schools there in the Glades that are under construction, but the agencies, they are already prepared to relocate to other sites in which they have. So I do know that they're opening there, and all the schools there in the Glades and relocating the students for those schools that are under constructions and what have you. But, Ms. Profit, am I correct when I said that there is about six out of the 14 that that have confirmed that they will be opening this coming Monday?
Yes, you're correct, Dr. Sheffield.
And then we did share with them that in regards to the, you know, the expectations and the recommendations, is that if things had not, if it did not look any differently in regarding to the, of course, the safety and well-being, not just of the students, but also the adults as well, if it did not look any different than in previous years, then surely there was something that we were not doing correctly, because safety is our primary concern for all parties involved. And so we did spend some time talking, and they all agreed in regarding to trying to keep those numbers down at least by half, by 50% or so, to where we can do, you know, do the best we can in regarding to trying to meet some of the immediate needs in regards to the community reaching out, asking that some of these agencies are able to open for the sake of the children. So, you know, we will continue to work with them, continue to do our, you know, best. We know that this is definitely some concerns, and we hear you loud and clear, you know, Dr. Robinson. But this also leads us will lead us back into the discussion around the request to open additional camps, which comes into Phase Two, which will be more. So there is some continuation of conversation around Phase Two, which will be those leases and and what the immediate concerns continues to be. You know, we're reading this afternoon that there are some camps that have opened up and two have already temporarily closed as of today because of positive cases there within the camps. So we do hear you. We hear you loud and clear. We will continue to work with the, you know, with the agencies. Definitely appreciate Mrs. Howell and and working with Legal, and we are looking for the constant feedback in regards to what we can do to just try to ensure the safety of everyone involved here.
Dr. Robinson, and then Mrs. Whitfield?
Let Mrs. Whitfield go ahead.
Go ahead, Mrs. Whitfield.
So since it says that the CBO is responsible for all costs and responsibility to comply with COVID-19, if they decide not to wear masks, are we terminating their contract?
Mrs. Rico?
Ms. Hall, would we be contractually able to terminate if they breached one of these warranties?
Your microphone's on.
You would be able to terminate in that case, yes.
Can I also ask, is the second line after that is about the CBO will be assessed for any damages? So if they have a COVID case there, are we assessing them for the damage of bringing a disease into the school, or is that not considered a damage? Not a damage?
It would it would have to be an actual damage, not that somebody was ill, but that, you know, there was some kind of claim of liability or some property damage that would occur, you know, some actual damage, not not somebody got ill.
Yes, that's a part of the original agreement with the CBOs.
Thank you.
Dr. Robinson, then Mr. Shaw?
Okay, I think I should defer to Mr. Shaw, because he hasn't spoken on this.
Mr. Shaw, go ahead.
Thank you. I I'm not sure. I think Dr. Robinson brought up the point that I was going to ask on this one. But what I'm not sure about is if we see that there's a camp, the if if there's a camp located in one of our schools, and they are not complying, do we have the authority to go in and say, tomorrow is your last day. You're out?
We also added an emergency termination clause. A superintendent has the authority to to effect an immediate termination in the event of health, welfare, or or safety issues.
But, okay, I think my question is whether or not that's adequate, and whether or not it's a debatable thing. Can they say, well, we're doing what we need, and six weeks later, then we finally make the decision, and it's already too late because we've had issues arise?
Okay, so when you have a a warranty, like, is included in this contract, it's material to the contract, and so I think that we would be within our rights to give them a notice. They would have the opportunity to cure as is in those contracts, and then we would go from there.
Okay, well, based on that, I'm not going to support this, because I think, and I understand why we have to give that notice, but I think Dr. Robinson's point was so valid. If there's an issue that arises, and we need to take action, I don't think we've got six weeks to wait for a hearing or whatever mediation or mitigation we have. If it's if if a principal is on that campus and sees things going, and they say, you can't come back tomorrow, I want to know that we have the authority to do it tomorrow.
Mrs. Rico, wouldn't the safety clause that should be
I can't hear. I can't hear a thing.
Turn microphones, please. So wouldn't the wouldn't the safety provision that Ms. Hall just read into the into the record here, wouldn't that give us the superintendent emergency authority to go in there and say, you're done today? Don't come back tomorrow? Mrs. Hall shaking her head?
Ms. Hall, go ahead. Go ahead. Your microphone. Your microphone.
Yes, there is an immediate termination for health, safety, and welfare.
Which would not be appealable, or, you know, there's they would not have to file anything in court. Superintendent can go in there and close them down today if they're not following safety protocols. You're shaking your head yes, Ms. Hall?
Yes, that's an emergency termination, yes.
Okay, Dr. Robinson?
Thank you. So, you know, my whole thing is about preventing such a issue, right? My whole thing is about preventing the spread of this virus between children and families and community, right? And, you know, I want these camps. I want to reopen schools. I just want us to do it in such a way that we move the risk as close to zero as we can. I know we can't get to zero, right? But we should do everything that we can do in terms of risk reduction, right? So for example, now, I'm gonna just tell you, some of these camps are in in Belle Glade. Well, from talking to the county, Belle Glade is having an uptick in in infections with COVID-19. I mean, like, we cannot just, like, play legal with this. And so, one, I would like to get an emailed copy of all the all their COVID-19 plans. But the question that I have at this point is, what medical person weighed in and said that what what was in their document, like, weighed in on the template that was used, I guess, by Mrs. Howell, the template that was used to say, check, 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 they they meet all the criteria? And then we talked to Dr. Merritt Smith, who is our I don't I can't get her title, the head medical person in the school district, so.
Dr. Robinson, we did hear back from Dr. Merritt Smith, and I shared her her response with Dr. Sheffield. I will email you a copy. Well, I'll share the copies with Dr. Sheffield and you regarding their plans. In our conversation on Monday with the providers, they reassured us in the meeting that they are following the CDC guidelines and the Department of Health guidelines, and they all agreed that both their staff and their students would wear masks, because that was one of the questions.
Okay, Mrs. Whitfield, you were next.
Thank you. I just wanted to emphasize how important it is to get this done tonight, because I really would like our our community-based organizations to get going. So I was wondering for Mr. Shaw and Dr. Robinson, if there is a way we could amend this right now in a way that would make you more comfortable, so we could make sure we could vote on this this evening and make sure that they get going.
Mr. Shaw, then Mrs. then Dr. Robinson?
I, you know, I think that I think that Ms. Rico's comments somewhat answered it. I'm still not comfortable that that everything and and also what Dr. Sheffield said, that emergency termination, I just want the assurance that there'll be the kind of oversight we need, so I'm fine with it.
Dr. Robinson?
So I think Mrs. Howell's comments gave me a lot of comfort, even though I still think we should set the expectations. And I know her to be, you know, very detail oriented, so I have no reason to question that every defined T was crossed and every defined I was dotted. And so, since I hear that you heard me, that the part of those defined Ts and Is included, every human being is expected to have face covering, then even though it still bugs me, I'm going to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. So let me ask you a question, Dr. Sheffield. The Y in South in the South County, YMCA in South County, usually has 380 kids in their camp. They use their facility, and they use Calusa Elementary School. They've been limited, instead of 300 kids in their own facility, they're only taking 100. They've been told up until maybe now that they can't use Calusa, which means they're from 380, so there's 280 families that can't go back to work because 280 kids don't have a camp. So are you is the Y one of the people in the first phase that we can give them the use of Calusa Elementary School so they can at least get the 80 kids back?
No, they are not. Unfortunately, they are not. They are part of that interlocal agreement, and that's the conversation that we had on yesterday, and we have been in contact with with the city of Boca Raton as of late yesterday evening. And we right now are in an email thread trying to talk about the Phase Two and about the leasing. Because once we opened up the summer camp leases for a select, and we know that we're opening it up for everyone, so we, as a district, the team is going to come together. I'm trying to get that meeting scheduled for tomorrow morning, an emergency or emergency meeting to talk about now the Phase Two and the leases, and how we, as a district, would like to move forward, because of course, again, that's going to be an increase in terms of opening up the facilities and them and being able to have the manpower to continue the cleanliness and and talk and regard and work with Legal around, again, what are some of the legal requirements, such as the riders that we have here this evening, which will be different from interlocal agreements.
All right, so speaking as just one board member, Dr. Fanoi, I hope that your staff will move quickly, because these families are depending on us to open these camps, because they're getting called back to work. I'm getting many calls from people down in my district that need to go back to work. Their offices are opening, and they need to go back to work. They have nowhere to put their children. So we need we need to move quickly to get that done. And General Counsel, I hope your staff will work very quickly to to work on these leases that are brought forward so that weeks don't go by without them getting done. So I I'm not suggesting that things get solved in legal, which is what people seem to think. But I know that you have a lot on your plate over there, so if you can make sure that when Dr. Sheffield brings these things, that that you and Dr. Fanoi, you would make sure that they get moving pretty quickly so we can get those camps open?
Yeah, I commit to that, and I think I also can commit to Dr. Sheffield and her team take copious notes. So and I also require that team to reach out to the board members, and so I think this is going to be one, obviously, with the discussion, that probably daily, she's going to have to give you updates on what where we're at with this Phase Two and what's going on with Phase One. I mean, some of the things Dr. Robinson brought up, we all know that this is, I mean, this is this is the issue, right? Like, this tension between CDC and and economic, moving the economy forward, but caring about people back at home. I mean, as Dr. Robinson said, and everyone else on this call has said, this is hard. So we will definitely keep moving through this, and I do commit to that, Mr. Barber.
Mr. Shaw?
Just very quick, Dr. Sheffield, you said that two camps closed. Was it because of employee positive? Or or students? Do we know?
Mr. Shaw, he did not identify. It just said two positive cases within the summer camps. And of course, that's not here, of course, here in Palm Beach County, because it's not open till it's effective Monday. But as we talk about Phase Two, just note that when we start talking about the summer camps with Phase Two and the leases and those interlocal agreements there, too, we would need to also bring into that same conversation will be all leases, because the local churches and other individuals that have been reaching out to us that have been leasing the facilities, we will have to be inclusive and bring everyone into that conversation.
If I may, just did I just got a text message from someone from the sheriff's office asking, apparently, the sheriff had asked but didn't turn in the right forms for 16 sites that they had paid for to use for camps. If somebody could follow up with that or call me, I can tell you who sent me the text and everything, but that may have an impact on this on this issue also.
Okay, we will follow up with you, Mr. Shaw.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Dr. Robinson.
Thank you. So I just want to, I need to circle back, and I hate to belabor the point, but so what I heard in prior conversations on prior days was that we did not want to put our expectations in these agreements, because then somehow we felt that we needed to monitor them, or that's not the right word, but to to make sure that they were being compliant with the agreement, right? But now, what being compliant with the agreement, right? But now, what, what I thought I heard is that if they're not compliant with what's in the attachment or in the, the COVID-19 plan, that we could terminate them as an emergency. So I'm not really understanding the difference, and I don't need a legal opinion now. What I'm gonna ask is that legal, we look at that again, because I still think that we're not, we don't eliminate our potential liability by having it in another document, right? So in my opinion, I think we're actually in a better place if we proactively state our expectations around protecting people who are on our campuses, in this case, in these summer camp agreements, rather than saying, yeah, but they had it in their document, right? So I'm just gonna ask that that be revisited, because even though I'mma support this today, because Mrs. Howell assured us that above and beyond the minimal CDC recommendations will take place, I just, I just think we need to state what we expect to happen on our campus and not think that we're protecting ourselves because we're one document removed. And I'm done.
Quinn, did I see your hand?
You did. I would like to concur with Dr. Robinson. I, let's face it, people are always bringing suits against us, so no matter what kind of protections that we take, I think we should build in our expectations, and in that expectation to say, you either comply with our expectations, or we suspend you immediately, or whatever that you do. I just, we make a statement.
Any other discussion? All right, we'll vote on the motion. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries, seven zero. That, that's the end of our, our new business items. Now we have board discussion items. The first one is BD 1. Dr. Robinson, dispar-